Welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting. We do appreciate your attendance. And for the viewers, thank you so very much for tuning in. For introductions, on my left is Commissioner Deb Shore and Commissioner Larry Hudgens. And on my right is Vice Chair and Commissioner Todd Wilchin and Commissioner Bill Avery. I am Commissioner Roma Amundson, Chair of the Board, and assisting this morning, we have, we will have Dave Durbin of the County Attorney's Office. He will be coming in later. Kelly Lundgren and Dan Nolte of the County Attorneys of the County Clerk's Office and Carrie Egan of the County Administrative Office. And so will you join me now in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and thank you for joining with us. And Mr. Clerk, will you begin the agenda, please?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Initial copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff. The material can also be reviewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item one are minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, May 3, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting from last week. Are there any corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Amundson?
Epstein.
Motion carries four yes, one abstention. Number two are claims. Approval of all claims processed through May 10, 2016.
Move approval of the claims.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve all claims processed through May 10. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three is a special presentation. Declaration of May 15 through the 21st is 2016 as Police Week in Lancaster County. Sheriff Terry Wagner.
Good morning. Thank you for indulging me on this. In 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15 every year as Law Enforcement Memorial Day and the week that May 15 is in as National Police Week. In 1994, President Clinton directed that the US flags be displayed at half-staff on May 15 every year at all government and public buildings. And I have a sample or a proclamation. I appreciate you signing and declaring Police Week in Lancaster County. We've had three deputy sheriffs who have died in the line of duty. In 1959, 27-year-old William Johnson was escorting a prisoner from, to the County Attorney's Office in the old courthouse, felt ill and laid down and suffered a massive heart attack and died. In 1973, Sergeant Frank Furr was involved in a narcotics search warrant service out near Walton, and he collapsed also from a heart attack, died about 19 days later, and that was determined to be a line-of-duty death as well. And then in 1987, Deputy Sheriff Craig Dodge was shot and killed answering a domestic disturbance call in Hickman, Nebraska. So those are the three deputies. Yesterday was the statewide memorial service in Grand Island where the, where the state law enforcement memorial is located. And then we have about four deputies who are going to be attending the National Law Enforcement Memorial Service, which is next Sunday, the 15th, in Washington DC.
Is there a proclamation to read?
This is a matter of designating May 15 to the 21st, 2016 as Police Week in Lancaster County. Whereas in 1963, the Congress of the United States and President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and a week in which it falls as National Police Week. And whereas there are possibly 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in line of duty, including Deputy William Johnson, Sergeant Franklin Furr, Deputy Craig Dodge of the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. And whereas the members of Lancaster County Sheriff's Office play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Lancaster County. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their law enforcement agencies. And that members of Lancaster County Sheriff's Office recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the Sheriff's Office of Lancaster County has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency, which unceasingly provides a vital public service, now therefore be it resolved, the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners calls upon all citizens of Lancaster County and upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May 15 through the 21st of 2016 as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities. And in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for observing the rights and security of all citizens. And be it further resolved, the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners encourages all citizens of Lancaster County to observe Sunday, May 15, 2015, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives in performance of duty and fly their flags at half-staff. Due to this 10th day of May, 2016, by the Board of Commissioners of Lancaster County.
I move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we declare the week of May 15 through 21st as Police Week in Lancaster County. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number four, a public hearing. Amendment of the Lancaster County General Assistance Guidelines.
Good morning.
Do you sound much safer for them that to testify out to give the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Sarah Hoyle, Lancaster County Human Services Director. And just to kind of give you an overview of the General Assistance Guidelines, these guidelines are put in place to set standard for who gets onto our county general assistance program. It sets the framework for the criteria for applying and being accepted into this program. This program again aids individuals in our community who need assistance with medical, medical needs, and then also non-food vouchers. So like with rent assistance, durable medical goods, that type of thing. Just to give you a brief overview of different things that we changed in here, well, actually, let me back up first. The process for this, this is done every two years. And the way that we go through these, these changes is we have a General Assistance Monitoring Committee. From that committee, we form a subcommittee of individuals who have vested interest in this. We did elicit responses from individuals in the community as well who had expressed interest that aren't part of the General Assistance Monitoring Committee. We meant to go through this. Our county attorney with the Civil Department, Dave Durbin, was involved with this process as well. It then went back to the General Assistance Monitoring Committee, to which they voted on it. Then it went to you at your staff meeting, and now it's here. The major changes that we made were updating the federal poverty guidelines. Those did not change very much, just by a couple dollars. Just to give you an idea, for a family of four to be considered the poverty level, it's still around $24,000. The major thing that we changed in here was behavioral health. And we took out the section dealing with behavioral health. We don't provide behavioral health services. The region has. This section was in here primarily when we had the Mental Health Center. And when that went away, then it pretty much voided a lot of the language that we had in these guidelines. So.
Any questions? Okay, well, this is a public hearing. I will now open a public hearing for anyone to speak in support of, in opposition to, or in a neutral position to the amendment of the Lancaster County General Assistance Guidelines. And I believe, yes.
I just like to thank Sarah and the General Assistance Board for going over these and updating them. They spend a lot of time and effort to be fair and equitable, and I think they've done an excellent job.
Okay. Any further comments? Well, I do not see any correlating item on here, so I'm assuming that we keep this open for another week. Is that correct?
I think that might be a good idea that we can bring a fully corrected version without legislative form, put that on the agenda next week, and then adopt them. So it'd be effective a week after today's hearing. And we don't have the attorney right now, but I think that would be a good process. We'll plan on putting them in, up on the agenda for adoption next week.
Okay. All right. So we'll keep the public hearing open then for another week. All right, let's move on to old business.
This is a reconsideration of an agreement with Great Plains Appraisal Company to provide referee-coordinated services for the 2016 tax year.
I was on the prevailing side when we discussed this item last time, and I would move to reconsider it.
Second. It's moved in second that we can, that we reconsider this agreement with Great Plains Appraisal Company. Any discussion? Okay, let's move forward then. Is your, my mic on?
It is now.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Excuse me.
Call the, call the roll.
Oh, call the, yes, please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
I'm going to vote yes with the understanding that this board supports putting a process, a procedure for putting this out for public bid. We've agreed to that, and Mr. Kubert.
This is for a motion to reconsider it, Bill.
That's tied into the.
You're not, you're not actually voting, I'm sorry.
No, this is just simply to open the.
I, I will vote yes.
Okay, okay.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. And I think that now what we can do is, okay, I understand, I, I understand last week that there was some discussion about this. I did go on Channel 5 and review it and so forth, you know. And so I think that let's, there were some questions asked. You weren't present.
Should we, should we go ahead and do 5B?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, please. I got ahead of myself a bit.
Old Business 5B is in agreement with Great Plains Appraisal Company on behalf of Wayne Kubert and Tom Kubert to provide the services of referee coordinator to coordinate referees who will hear all property tax protests for the 2016 tax year. Before the Lancaster County Board of Equalization, the referee coordinator shall be reimbursed at a rate of $95 per hour with a total compensation not to exceed $180,000.
Okay, Todd?
Madam Chair, in your absence last week, we did have a discussion about this agenda item. There were questions. And we did vote two to two, so therefore the motion to approve failed. We did invite Mr. Kubert to come before the board during the staff meeting on Thursday to address the questions that we had as far as the referee process. I'm sorry, the referee coordination process, as well as the other issues of, you know, concern involving the other services that are provided. And I think he adequately did address those questions. But if anyone has any other questions?
Okay, all right. Are there any other questions? Sometimes you don't, being gone for a week, really, you really do lose out on a lot of action. Anything else?
I want to hear from Tom.
Okay, let's hear.
Good morning, Tom Kubert with Great Plains Appraisal. The summary provided by Commissioner Wilchin is accurate in what occurred last week. At one point, we removed our contract to make sure that we were addressing the issues that the board may have with our contract throughout the discussion on the Thursday staff meeting in combination with a meeting held between myself, Chief Administrator Carrie Egan, and Commissioner Wilchin to make sure that there were no additional issues. I was content and I resubmitted the contract for approval today. And so that's what we're seeking today.
Okay. Yes.
I would just like to clarify, and I think I told you this on Thursday. My vote no on that a week ago was actually not a vote on the specific contract. But it was a, an expression of my discontent with the process by which we have come to this, by the process by which we set up the protest procedures. And we have not had a public bid on these services for 22 years. And I thought it was time that we do that. And I made that, I made that point last year when we were at, going through this process. Nothing happened. So I thought this would be an attention getter. If I voted no on this contract, has nothing to do with the exact contract or the terms of that contract, but the process by which we have gone forward in this now for 22 years without a public bid. I think a public bid is necessary. I've been assured that we will have one this year, or at least we'll set the process in place this year for 2017.
Deb? I will make a motion. We approve the agreement with Great Plains Appraisal.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this agreement with Great Plains Appraisal. Any further discussion?
I'll just make one more comment that I made last week, that by way of timing, you know, this is something that we need to act on because this is the 2016 process that starts in less than a month because we're voting to approve this contract before us. And only the contract before us. I did have a conversation with Mr. Kubert in the presence of Mr. Egan. And so to my knowledge, there were no concerns about the contract before us. Therefore, there was nothing for us to modify. But, you know, moving forward, I think the public needs to understand that it's, the process is very complicated and it starts in less than a month. Assessor will mail out the notifications of property evaluations. You know, they'll have till the end of June to respond, to request a hearing. And so, I mean, I think at this time, you know, we should approve the contract before us.
Okay. We had this discussion in. Any further comments? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
And let's go on to J and K then.
You know, under new business, 6J is a contract with Great Plains Appraisal, Inc. in the amount of $2,700 for appraisal services on project, on a project on North 27th Street, project number C 55G 407 bracket two, tract one.
Move approval?
Second.
It's moved in second.
And I just want to note that this contract and the services provided are completely different than the referee services and the coordinator services. There's a variety of services provided by Great Plains Appraisal, and we greatly appreciate their outstanding work.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we approve this contract with Great Plains Appraisal. We have some discussion?
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So what I want to say about this piece of ground is this is a piece of ground that will most likely be coming before you for condemnation. And because my appraisal was more than a year old, I'm required to get a new appraisal on that ground so that we can assure that we are offering the fairest, best price to the citizen in Lancaster County. We did go out for a request for proposal for this job. And Great Plains was the only person who responded to our request for proposal. The other agencies said they were too busy to do the work.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, it's been moved in second that we approve this contract. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K is a space rental agreement between the Lancaster Event Center in Lancaster County on behalf of the Lancaster County Clerk for meeting space with the event center to be used for hearings between July 6 and July 15, 2016.
Tom Kubert with Great Plains Appraisal. I just wanted to point out that the schedule that we're going to use with the event center is in accordance with their request that we alter our schedule to allow them to rent more days and that we will be in their way less days out at the event center. So rather than being spread out over a period of up to 30 days, this year's hearings, based on the year we're anticipating, we are squeezing into two weeks to allow them to lease that space more efficiently, also to cut down on the cost to the county. And that's what, that's what's before you today. I can't say enough great things about using the event center. We get positive comments from the public about the access, about the parking, about the facility. And many people who are not normally taxpayers who would visit that center are always impressed with the great things that are going on out there. And so I would, I would offer my congratulations to you for having great facility.
Well, thank you. Corey?
And I'm just here in case you have any questions. I don't believe anything changed last year with regard to the rate. It's just condensing the number of days, fewer days, longer days.
Okay.
Yeah.
And if constituent is unavailable during those two weeks, they still have the ability to file. They, a person-to-person meeting is not required. They can just file everything electronically or via mail.
Correct. And Tom has gone above and beyond in the past and made special arrangements if they had an emergency or something of that nature whereby they couldn't meet the days that we have on the schedule. Sometimes they've even come out to our office or his office and had a hearing. So we will try to work with them the best we can.
If I may clarify, a face-to-face meeting, the opportunity for a face-to-face meeting is required under Nebraska statute. That's why, why we offer dates with, with a variety of times and schedules within that two-week period. They can opt to submit in writing their information, which is also considered under the same venue and the same protest process.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay. Did we, did we have a motion on this?
Aren't you?
Okay.
I will move approval of the space rental agreement.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the space rental agreement. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you for coming in, Tom.
Let's see, new business 6A, we've acted on earlier. So 6B is to set this annual salary for Chief Deputy Sheriff Todd Duncan at $112,323 effective May 12, 2016.
Good morning, Terry Wagner, County Sheriff. I'm pleased to introduce to you today Todd Duncan. Many of you know Todd, some of you don't. Todd was with the Sheriff's Office from 1995 till 2012, was a captain at that time on our, in our office, and was offered the Assistant Chief of Police job at the University of Nebraska with former Captain Owen Yardley. And so he's been over at the university for about four years as the Assistant Chief of Police with Jeff Blimeister's appointment as, as Chief of Police for Lincoln. I obviously started a process to select a new chief deputy, and Todd was my, my choice. He starts Thursday full-time, so he's here on his own dime. But I would appreciate you setting his salary today, and we'll get him sworn in on Thursday.
Todd, would you like to just visit a little bit about yourself?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Sheriff Wagner, for this opportunity, and thank you all for the opportunity. As the sheriff said, I spent a majority of my 23 years in law enforcement working with the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. So I'm really excited to return and serve alongside a talented group of employees. I recognize fully the responsibility that comes with this position, and I'm committed to preserving the Sheriff's Office longstanding reputation of being a first-class agency that treats its employees fairly and, and also treats the community fairly. So I'm just honored to be here.
Thank you.
Well, we were sad to lose Jeff. That you were the first name that popped into my mind as well. So sheriff made an excellent choice.
Thank you.
We didn't even talk.
Larry?
Welcome back.
Thank you.
All right, okay.
I would make a motion that we set the annual salary for Chief Deputy Sheriff Todd Duncan at $112,323 effective May 12, 2016.
Second that motion.
It's been moved in second that we set the annual salary for $112,323. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, and before you leave, I, we'd kind of gone on before, but I did want to say, you know, with the declaration of the Police Week in Lancaster County, please extend to all of the people in law enforcement our sincere thanks for their work in law. all of the people in law enforcement our sincere thanks for their work in law enforcement in providing security and safety for our citizens.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Six C is a special designated license application from Broken Arrow Sellers LLC for the Catamounts Bowl of Nebraska on June 4th, 2016 at 26969 Homestead Expressway, Princeton, Nebraska.
I would move approval.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the special designated license application for Broken Arrow Sellers. I do want to just mention for the record that we do have a letter from the Broken Arrows, Broken Arrow Sellers of Imperial, Nebraska, discussing their practices in the past and their training and where they are from. So, for the record, we do have that letter. Okay, it's been moved in second that we approve this license application for Broken Arrow. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
D is a special designated license application from Deer Springs Winery LLC for reception on June 13th, 2016 at 16255 Adams Street, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the special designated license application from Deer Springs Winery. I believe this is at Deer Springs Winery, isn't it?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
E is a recommendation from the purchasing department and the county sheriff to award and execute a purchase order for sheriff uniform clothing and accessories. We recommend Alamar uniforms to be awarded as the lowest response of responsible vendor meeting the specifications. The total amount of the order is $25,770.50.
Good morning, Terry Wagner County Sheriff. This is my model, Sergeant Brent Moore. We have been looking at different types of ballistic vest carriers for over a year now. Brent's wearing a model here that this actually comes off and we're looking at two different...
So it's, okay.
We're looking, yeah, what is wrong with the mic there?
It's, it's gone.
Okay, we're looking at two different styles of vest. The one Brent has on, obviously this comes off and then this is a, it's a cool shirt. It makes it much more comfortable and cooler to wear. And, and if the deputy's in the office, they can take their vest off and, and dry out a little bit, if you would. The second one that we are going to offer deputies is one that has some load-bearing capabilities. So some of the equipment off the duty belt will be on Velcro, kind of a molly holder, if you would, on the front of the vest. It takes some of the weight off of our hips.
Yeah.
The, the people who have done the wear tests for us have remarked how, how any back issues that they may have had, that they just had because of the 20 pounds or so we wear on our, on our hips, really was eliminated because of the switching, the, the load goes to the shoulders as opposed to the hips. So, we, we have been looking at these for about a year now, I think.
Yeah, probably a year and a half.
A year and a half, doing some wear tests, looking at different companies and those kinds of things. And with Mr. Wallace's help, Alamar Uniform has the lowest bid. I, I would note that we are purchasing these with forfeited asset funds. These are not general tax dollars. Because it's a large purchase all at once that we normally have not budgeted for, we're paying for these out of forfeited, forfeited assets.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you for that explanation.
The color's a little bit more of an olive tone as opposed to a brown?
I, I will tell you that brown is very difficult with uniform makers to, it is. And that's one of the things we looked at a lot was, we want to make sure that the sleeves match the vest carrier and make sure that they look, you know, the same, so.
Well, the cool dry fabric will make a significant difference.
It'll help a lot. And, and just encourage our folks to wear their vests every day on those really hot days, so.
Great modeling job. Okay, I think we need a motion to...
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve this recommendation for the purchase of these uniformed clothing and accessories. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Six F is a recommendation from the purchasing department and emergency management to award a contract to Schmader Electric Construction, Inc. to provide an installed outdoor warning siren in the amount of $26,575.
Good morning, Jim David Saber, Director, Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management. When we build our emergency management budget each year, we plan to add at least one additional siren to our current inventory and that's the item that's here before you this morning. The weather that rolled into us on a big hurry yesterday is an excellent example of just how vital these warning sirens are. We had a lot of people moving around during the late afternoon rush yesterday. When we can get that warning out in a timely manner, I, I think we're very well served for it. So again, this, this purchase will allow us to add one siren to our current inventory.
And you were very busy yesterday.
Yes, ma'am, so.
Okay. Move approval?
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this recommendation for the siren. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Oh, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just would like to know where you're putting it.
This one we plan to put on North 56th Street, just south of Interstate 80. Last year we purchased a new siren and we were able to relocate one siren off of East Campus. So, the new siren last year went to Raymond Central High School. The relocated siren went to 98th and Pine Lake Road, a growing residential area. So, we met with Brandon Garrett from the planning department. He monitors growth and new housing permits throughout the county to get an idea. Our satellite communities are very well covered by the current pattern, so we look to attach to the, the city, the county city limits again, where we can put these sirens that they'll do the most good for the most people. And that, that North 56th area is a developing commercial industrial area with some residential close by. So, these new sirens have a one-mile radius on them, so by, by putting them strategically locating them, it really gives us a good coverage area.
Todd?
I was going to make a point that, yeah, that there is a new housing development just off the interstate, off North 56th. And so this would be, I think, important coverage for, for those homeowners and even the businesses that are...
Correct.
...locating on the North 56th.
And that's just it. When, when we do our research, when we're planning to find a location, we try to have a, a primary and a couple of alternates if, if I do have the funds available to buy more than one siren.
Larry?
Well, I think you're doing a commendable job in constantly monitoring where the growth is. And I think we have a director, Mr. Meyer, that lives out in that area, I'm sure he'll, he'll appreciate it. And all of us did yesterday across the, across the county. And, you know, it was a bold step that your predecessor took to put the sirens out at the state recreation areas too. But we've got a lot of people out there and so it's, we appreciate the county-wide coverage.
Very good. I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we approve this recommendation. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
G is a recommendation from the purchasing department and the county sheriff to award and execute a purchase order for telecommunications analysis software, maintenance and support. We recommend Panlink LTD as a sole source vendor. Total amount of the order is $26,400.
Good morning, Terry Wagner County Sheriff again. This is, gives us the ability, when we get court orders for phone analysis and those kinds of things, for our forensics computer, our computer forensics folks to be able to do the analysis on, on that equipment. This money too is taken from forfeited assets, not from general tax dollars, so that's the good news.
Okay.
I, I, I'm sorry, I don't have a real technical detailed explanation of what this does. I've been told before and I know what I told you, so.
Well, sometimes that's the best way, isn't it?
The folks that use it need it, that's all I know.
I would move approval. Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve this recommendation to purchase telecommunications analysis, analysis software, maintenance and support. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
H is a grant contract with volunteer partners to provide funding of $68,400 for resource coordination of local partners and volunteers who will provide parenting and relationship instruction to current adult drug court participants. Term of the grant contract is April 1st, 2016 through September 30th, 2017.
Good morning, Kim Etherington, Director, Community Corrections. This contract is the grant-funded contract that was recently terminated with another organization in an effort to get someone with maybe a bigger presence in the community that can assist us with this, with identifying volunteers, so.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this funding for the resource coordination of local partners and volunteers. Any further, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
And this is a program that really does provide like family, getting together with the families and so forth. And this has been a tremendous success over the past year, hasn't it?
Absolutely. Celebrating families is the only treatment intervention we have in the adult drug court program that involves the entire family, children, adolescents, adults, getting together, working through those issues within the family system. Dynamics of a family change dramatically when people are in recovery and everybody, everybody really needs an opportunity to, to have support in that process. So this, this curriculum addresses that issue and it does a fabulous job.
Well, you had described it to us and thank you so very much for kind of thinking outside the box and getting that in. Thank you.
Next is six I, a cooperative purchasing contract between JVC Kenwood USA Corporation in Lancaster County to supply and deliver public safety communications equipment for Lancaster County engineering. Term of the contract is from execution through June 30th, 2016. Cost to the county is not to exceed $3,000.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this cooperative purchasing contract. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next is six L, which is an amendment to county contract C-13-542 between Nebraska Printing Center, Lancaster County, the City of Lincoln and the Lincoln Lancaster County Public Building Commission for envelope and supply printing. The amendment increases the county's maximum expenditures by $14,000 for the remainder of the current term to a total estimated expenditure, expenditure of $30,000.
Move approval.
I'll, I'll second, but I do have a question. We're just buying a whole lot more envelopes. Is there a specific reason for the amendment?
Bob Walla, purchasing agent. There was a purchase made by a county department that was very significant, that was above and beyond what our estimated expenditures were for the year, so that's what bumped it up by that much.
Larry?
What department and for what reason?
Was the county treasurer, I believe, for, I think it was license plates envelopes. And they only do it once every five years. Candace did it this time.
That makes sense.
Since she was new, she didn't get a hold of us, so the, the vendor was already in place and we've already talked to them about how we're going to handle it next time.
Great. Okay, great. Thanks, Sonae.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we amend this contract. Would you have an explanation as to why it increased? Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
M is an amendment to county contract C-14-255 between Vulcan Aluminum, Lancaster County and the City of Lincoln for the annual supply of traffic signs and sign faces. The amendment renews the agreement for May 20th, 2016 through May 19th, 2017, and reflects a price increase as described in attachment A. Cost to the county is not to exceed $4,500.
Okay.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. This amendment is for signs and I just wanted to remind the board, this is an area that we have done significant improvements to at the county. We now inventory all the signs and we only buy what we think we're going to need during that time period. So, if you were to go back and track this cost over the last several years, you would have really seen kind of a standing by from our department of between $40,000 and $50,000 in signs a year. We've continued to reduce our inventory by using the signs we have and this is just a, a cost savings to the taxpayers that I have implemented.
Approval.
Second, and we appreciate your management abilities and the way that you've constantly look at your inventories and try to effectively use your resources.
Thank you.
And another thing, just, we should get out there, what does a stop sign cost?
You know, a stop sign with a post costs right around $100.
So, kids out there, they're not a plaything. Look what you're costing the taxpayers if you deface a sign, plus maybe not having it up or not having it readable and causing accidents. So, it's not a challenge thing. These do cost money and they're there for a safety reason.
Okay, we do have a motion in a second, I believe. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
And Pam, it's not on the agenda, but during public comment, would you be able to get, do you have time to possibly give us about a three or four-minute discussion of what's the flooding?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Six N is an amendment to contract number C-15-215 between Beatrice Lawn Care, Inc. in Lancaster County for the annual requirements of noxious weed control, including spraying mowning and mowing. The amendment renews the contract for an additional one-year term beginning May 19th, 2016 through May 18th, 2017. The cost to the county is not to exceed $10,000.
Good morning, Brent Meyer, Lancaster County Weed Superintendent. I'm going to speak on items N, O, P, and Q as they're all renewal contracts. These are in the second year of our third-year option, so it's just a renewal contract with the same contractors we've used in the past. I think it's worth noting that these, any of the work that these contractors do are on enforcement, so it's either on enforcement, on weed abatement, on the mowing, or on noxious weeds, on spraying. Those, when those contractors do that work, they immediately bill us, and we file a possible notice of unpaid weed assessment against the property, so we don't just go out there and mow these properties for people for free as some people in, in the public think. We do pass that on to the property, we attach a lien to the property, plus our administrative fee on these. So even though we don't recoup it all in the same year, over time, we do recoup these costs unless, for some reason, the property just has no value to it. So with that, I would ask for the approval on those contracts.
Now, move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the amendment to the contract with Beatrice Lawn Care in Lancaster County. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. O is an amendment to contract C dash fifteen dash two eighteen between DeAngelo Brothers in Lancaster County for the annual requirements of noxious weed control, including spraying and mowing. Amendment renews the contract for an additional one-year term, begin, beginning May nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, through May eighteenth, two thousand seventeen. The cost to the county is not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment with DeAngelo Brothers in Lancaster County. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Six P is an amendment to county contract C dash fifteen dash two seventeen between Gary's Lawn and Landscape in Lancaster County for the annual requirements of noxious weed control, including spraying and mowing. Amendment renews the contract for an additional one-year term, beginning May nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, through May eighteenth, two thousand seventeen. Cost to the county is not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment between Gary's Lawn and Landscape in Lancaster County. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Q is an amendment to county contract C dash fifteen dash two sixteen between Yards, between Mr. Yards and Moore LLC in Lancaster County for the annual requirements of noxious weed control, including spraying and mowing. The amendment renews the contract for an additional one-year term, beginning May nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, through May eighteenth, two thousand seventeen. Cost to the county is not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to, this amendment to the contract between Mr. Yards and Moore in Lancaster County. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Six R is an assignment of rights under contract C dash fifteen dash five twenty for electronic monitoring equipment and services from Alcohol Monitoring Systems, Inc., to VigilNet America LLC effective March twenty-first, two thousand sixteen.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve this contract. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Six S is a request to re, to re, excuse me, a request to create the classification of facilities and properties assistant director at the proposed pay grade of sixty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents to eighty-six thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents.
Doug McDaniel, Human Resources, this is a new position we've been working with, with the Director of Facilities and Properties for the succession planning and for a little more management backup in this area. We've taken it to the Personnel Board. Our market data shows a pay grade of C twenty-three at the state of sixty-seven, two fifty-eight, eighty-eight to eighty-six thousand one forty-seven, thirty-six to be the appropriate pay range.
Bill?
Do you already have someone in mind for this position?
No, sir. Not to my knowledge, at least. No, and Mr. Kline has not voiced that either, so.
Okay. Yes. Larry?
Would the appropriate motion be to approve this pay range?
The position classification at, at, at the pay range as it stated in the resolution, yes.
I would so move.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we create, that we create this classification of facilities and properties assistant director. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Oh, yes.
We have asked Mr. Kline for a number of years to develop this position, so that we do, do have a backup, and this is, is ultimately paid for. This will be a county position, but Public Building Commission will be intricately involved with this person as well.
It's been moved in seconded. Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. T is the reappointment of Valdean Nelson to the Keno Human Services Prevention Fund, a three-year term commenced in July first, two thousand sixteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this reappointment of Valdean Nelson to the Keno Human Services Prevention Fund. Any discussion?
I, I will note for the record that Valdean is a dedicated member, does all the reading and prep work, and asks great questions, and looks forward to her service for the next three years.
Larry?
And while we like to bring new people from the volunteer role, Valdean has served so expertly over the years and does possess a knowledge base, which is a real credit to, to this commission.
Okay, please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Six U is the determination of employment status of Lancaster County Corrections Director, Mike Thurber.
Okay, and I do have a notice that we have been asked to go into executive session on this.
That is correct. What I would recommend is perhaps we recess this meeting, finish up the, or I would go to the consent items, read those, do with the Board of Equalization, recess this meeting after you, you get past the consent items and come back. We'll reconvene, go into executive session, finish out the agenda. I think that'd be a little more time efficient.
Okay, we need a motion to go into recess?
We have to finish, we have to finish the.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Never mind, okay. Yes, let's go on to consent items then.
Number seven are consent items. Receive and place on file the following reports for April, two thousand sixteen. Clerk of the District Court, County Clerk, Records and Information Management. Right-of-way contracts between Lancaster County and the following. Jerry Benish, Luke Benish, Leo Benish, Chris Benish, and John C. Berry, co-trustees of the Leonard E. and Marlin Benish Charitable Trust, Northwest one hundred and twenty-sixth Street and West Agnew Road, in the amount of three hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty cents. Michael and Jenny Minchow, North one hundred and sixty-second Street and Raymond Road, in the amount of four hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. Robert E. J. Retzloff, South one hundred and ninetieth Street and Oliver Creek Road, in the amount of four hun- excuse me, of seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. Margaret East Mayo, Northwest one hundred and twenty-sixth Street and West Mill Road, in the amount of three hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty cents. David J. and Manana and Wheeler, Northwest one hundred and twenty-sixth Street and West Agnew Road, in the amount of five hundred and forty-six dollars and forty cents.
Move approval of the consent items.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the consent items. Please call the roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Shore?
[coughs]
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number eight is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on the agenda, may do so at this time.
One year ago this week, we experienced dramatic flooding. In fact, we got ourselves in a weather cycle where every three days, we were hit. Since that time period, my department has worked tirelessly to repair our roads and bridges, and I'm happy to announce that until yesterday, we had pretty much repaired all seventeen hundred and seventy-six locations of road damage and removed over three thousand tons of debris from our box culverts and bridges. But of our thirteen critically damaged bridges from the flood from last year, two are still currently closed. One has been repaired, one you approved the contract for last week. That leaves eleven bridges in need of repairs, one of which has been denied funding by FEMA, which we are currently in negotiations with them on, and four that FEMA has not responded to us yet on. I know that all these bridges have to be fixed. Please keep in mind that in addition to these thirteen bridges I've just talked about, we have seventy-six bridges in need of replacement in Lancaster County. Twenty-one of those are considered to be structurally deficient, and two are considered to be functionally obsolete. This is a serious problem for all of us in Lancaster County. People ask me what they should do when it rains, and at this point, I don't really have another answer other than to pray, because that's what I do. That's what I do every time it rains. I am pleading with this board to fund my department, to fund my department to a higher level so that we can replace and restore these bridges, because every time it rains, I worry about the citizens of Lancaster County losing their lives in one of these structures. Thank you.
Larry?
No.
Pam?
I know it's, it's early and everything, but did we lose any bridges last night?
We haven't physically lost any bridges. The bridge on Havelock Avenue by the event center will remain closed until the water goes down, so that we can inspect the west abutment. It's in very bad shape. This, the repairs to this bridge have not been approved by FEMA at this time. We will have to repair these, this bridge regardless of what FEMA says. I'm, I'm concerned about that bridge. I'm also very concerned about H two oh seven. The water crested at about five o'clock this morning. It did crest in the area of, of the Havelock Avenue Bridge at about twenty feet. Twenty-one five was the old record, just so that gives you an order of magnitude of where we were at yesterday. You know, this bridge just cannot take these repeated high waters. So again, it will remain closed until the water goes down. We expect that in the next twelve to twenty-four hours, that water will, will continue to dissipate. The same thing with Bridge H two oh seven, also had flows in the eighteen to twenty feet on that bridge. That's the bridge where we had to acquire right-of-way to be able to get in, to shore off that southwest abutment, and so we'll continue to monitor those and the other bridges through the day, throughout the day. We do know we have a serious quantity of debris from our already damaged channels.
Thank you for that report.
Yeah, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have one quick question, Pam. You distinguish between structurally deficient and functionally deficient. If you're structurally deficient, doesn't that imply that you're also functionally? If you're, I don't, you wouldn't know the difference.
It's, it's two different terminologies, so structurally deficient means it's not the most sound structure. Functionally obsolete means that the structure, well, I mean, and they could be both, they could be both, but functionally obsolete means the structure doesn't meet today's modern standards, it's not wide enough, or maybe it has railings like the Truss Bridge that can no longer pass a combine, it's not how we would build bridges anymore.
But it's, it, it's not necessarily structurally deficient and therefore unsafe, right?
It's not necessarily structurally deficient, but often functionally obsolete find themselves also being structurally deficient.
Okay. Oh, Todd?
I, I was able to observe the operations in the Emergency Operations Center last evening. I happened to be downtown at five o'clock, was able to observe, and I think the staff, everyone involved did an excellent job. I felt very confident in their abilities, and we did have a conversation during that. I, I observed a, a conversation that the county engineer had with a representative of the Lower Platte NRD, as well as Public Works, and we, one of the things that we did discuss, or I guess they discussed and I observed, was the channel debris, that there still is debris in these channels that still could possibly dislodge and cause damage to county infrastructure, and I think that is something that we do need to have a conversation with going forward, because it's, it's going to be a challenge, and like I said, it's, if we hit the cycle again every third day and we continue this precipitation, I mean, it, it could further destabilize our county infrastructure, which we've made huge investments in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The weather was a bit interesting yesterday in certain parts of Lincoln-Lancaster.
How was it?
I've been remiss, not the first words a cardiac surgeon should say to a patient waking in the ICU. Sometime back, exact date uncertain, when the grins and giggles of the board meeting ended, I approached Dave Durbin and quietly offered an observation. Durbin would know he was a journeyman Deputy Lancaster County Attorney when an ID plate with his name was displayed, but I advised, if he was told to pay for it, he should file a grievance. David Durbin, D E R B I N, number two-five-seven-four-four, Deputy Lancaster County Attorney, Lancaster County Attorney's Office, not to be confused with Dick Durbin, Senior U.S. Senator, Illinois. Dick Durbin, D U R B I N, is probably our Durbin, Richard. The first meeting of this board I attended, what, about a hundred years ago, the Deputy Lancaster County Attorney, Lancaster County Attorney's Office, my recollection, was a chap named Brittany Barons. Strange, I do not remember if Barons had a nameplate. Brittany Barons was generally cheerful, enthusiastic, professional, smiled, seemed mostly happy and satisfied with life and law. The advice offered to this board by Barons usually was designed to keep the board away from, beware, there be monsters here. I may have made comments that put a look of puzzlement, or disagreement, or indigestion on Brittany Barons. Some say I can be unlikable, you can ask my wife. Some cannot, or do not, or will not see what I try to do. With exceptions, what I try to do is not personal, and so back to David Durbin. My window on Durbin is these meetings. If there be monsters here, I like to think Durbin, or any professional in the Lancaster County Attorney's Office, will provide competent advice. I too have a dog in this fight. Ain't democracy beautiful? But if I cause puzzlement, or disagreement, or indigestion for Deputy Lancaster County Attorney Dave Durbin, to paraphrase the character Sal Tesio, AKA Abe Vigoda, in the first Godfather film, it was only business, nothing personal. Deputy County Attorney David Durbin, enjoy the ride. Glad you're here. Do I have time? Is it me, or do others think, if I had the exclusive concession or franchise on orange barrels, orange cones, orange barricades, orange signs for only Lincoln, Nebraska by the end of this calendar year, I would be a billionaire?
And since we're talking about road construction, I'm pleased to report, I got a call yesterday from Roger Fireguard, and Fifty-Sixth Street is open now, south of Highway Two, all the way to Pine Lake.
I'm going to drive that road.
I'm driving it today.
That wouldn't affect you in any way, would it?
Oh, not at all. Daily.
Okay, thank you.
Next is number nine announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners held a staff meeting on Tuesday, May tenth, two thousand sixteen, at seven-thirty a.m. in the Bill Luxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, May twelfth, two thousand sixteen, at eight-thirty a.m. in the Bill Luxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesdays, May seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, at nine a.m. in Room One Twelve of the County City Building, with the Board of Equalization immediately following. County Commissioners can be reached at four oh two, four four one, seven four four seven, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live. It is rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays, ca- on cable cha- on Five City TV Cable Channel Five. In addition, the meeting, the meeting may be viewed on the internet at lancaster NE.gov under Five City TV Video On Demand, or Five City TV Video on YouTube.
Okay, and before we entertain a motion to recess, I would like to remind people that today is Election Day, and that I would ask you all to exercise your duty of citizenship, your right of citizenship, and go vote. It's an exciting day. Thank you. And now, a vote for recess.
Just declare.
Oh, just declare recess?
Just declare.
Okay, we'll go into recess now, and we will move into the Board of Equalization meeting.
A copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is all cut in on, on the wall at the rarely hearing room. Additionally, copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Also in attendance this morning is Scott Gaines from the county assessor's office. Agenda I and I are minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, May third, two thousand sixteen.
Second. It's moved in second that we approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held last week. Any discussion? Or any corrections, I should say? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two are additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the additions and deductions.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three is a public hearing for motor vehicle tax exemption applications. This is for the Catholic Bishop of Lincoln doing business Cavalry Catholic Cemetery and Mausoleum and for Fellowship Baptist Church.
Okay, we'll open this public hearing. And is there anyone to speak in opposition or in support of? In opposition to or in support and neutral position to the motor vehicle tax exemption applications on these two churches? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
I would move that we approve the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve these motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number four is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county Board of Equalization business, not on agenda, may do so at this time.
And seeing none, let's move forward.
I would make a motion that we adjourn the Board of Equalization.
Second.
It's moved in second that we adjourn the Board of Equalization. Please call the roll.
Wilton.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, the Board of Equalization is adjourned and now let's return back to the board meeting. And we need to go into executive session.
Oh, yes, I do. I do, I do have the language.